7:02, I'm going to call the Village Newglers Board Meeting to Order. Uh, Kelsey, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Michael Bell?
Present.
Henry Janisch?
Here.
Peggy Cruz?
Present.
Tammy Newberry?
I'm here.
Chuck Phillipsen? Chuck Phillipsen?
Here.
Kaylee Walters? Kaylee Walters? Roger Trutman?
Here. Okay, we have a forum. Uh, Item Two, I'd look for an approval of the agenda.
This is Tammy, I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Michael Bell will second.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item Three, Public Appearances and Citizens' Comments on Items Not List on This Agenda. No debate will occur. Items will not be acted upon in this meeting but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone on that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
Can I just ask one question about, uh, about the bills just reading through?
Yeah, go ahead, Tammy.
Um, can I just ask for more information about what the Badger Sporting Goods Bill is?
Yes, Tammy, this is Kelsey. The Badger Sporting Goods Bill invoice was for, I believe, a pitching machine for youth softball and baseball. I think Chris is on. Chris, can you elaborate on that?
Uh, yep, uh, there's another bill coming too. We got all brand-new hats, uh, for all our youth kids. We hadn't got new hats in probably six years. And we purchased a brand-new pitching machine, uh, that we, you can utilize in games and practices. Um, it's more of a fly ball machine, uh, so it's a good addition to the program. Uh, we have had some pitching machines in the past and the ones that we have are pretty, pretty dated. I think there's a couple that I, I threw one away and I think one was from above my age when I was playing in the youth program. So, just updating some of the equipment we have.
Awesome, I just, uh, I just wanted clarification of what it all was.
Yep.
Oh, just to clarify for Tammy, that's, that was budgeted, right?
That's correct. It comes out of the, um, general operations budget of the park and rec, uh, line items.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, I'm lost. We've got a motion and a second on that already and we're not.
We did not, but I will make a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
I'm Michael Bell, will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business, consideration discussion to opening Garner Park Infield. Drake?
Uh, Chris, would you let me to read the comments you had submitted or would you like to run through them?
Uh, I don't have them in front of me, so if you have them, go ahead and read away.
Okay. Uh, this is included in your packet if you had time to read it before, but I'll run through them. Uh, this is, is there a comment submitted by Director Chris Reer? Uh, the Garner Park Improvement Project has been completed and no additional work is planned. On April 12th, the contractor overseeded and fertilized the outfield to ensure the outfield grass grows to the village's satisfaction. Uh, no further work by the contractor is expected unless grass growth is unsatisfactory per the contract, which calls for 90% coverage. Uh, the grass is a ballfield mix grass, uh, which is known to be traffic tolerant once established. A description of the mix is included in your packet. Uh, for grass seed to germinate and establish, uh, soil temperature should be between 68 and 86 degrees. Uh, we have not yet seen those temperatures and therefore the grass remains sensitive. Uh, due to those facts, uh, it's, uh, Director Reer's recommendation, the outfield remain closed for the month of May. Uh, the infield is ready for play and infield activity should have no negative impact on the outfield grass growth. Uh, therefore, it is Director Reer's recommendation to open the infield for practice only beginning Wed- Wednesday, May 4th. Coaches would be informed, uh, the outfield is off limits with the exception of retrieving errant ground balls. Drills, warm-ups, and/or other intensive uses are, would be prohibited. Uh, as the grass along the concrete pads and the foul lines is also still being established, there would be a designated entry and exit point to limit potential disruption. Chris plans to communicate to coaches that failure to comply with those rules may result in consequences. Uh, so, to reiterate, his recommendation is to open the infield, uh, for practice only for the month of May. Uh, he also submitted some informational material that does not require action by the board tonight. Uh, Cooling Land Concepts is the landscape contract subcontractor. Inform the village their recommendation is to limit play on the outfield until June 30th. That letter is included in your packet. At this time, uh, Chris plans to fertilize and use pre-emergent on Ju- June 1st. Uh, Cooling's timeline is understandably conservative and is designed to maximize grass growth to ensure the long-term viability of the outfield. Uh, to balance the long-term health of the field with the short-term recreational opportunities of the program participants, Chris has asked the league to schedule only away games for the first two weeks of June and schedule home games in the second half of June. Uh, these, he, these can be adjusted if conditions require. Uh, grass growth has been strong the last two to three weeks and Chris will continue to evaluate the grass and make an update slash recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Committee on May 11th and the Village Board on May 17th and if necessary, June 7th regarding the readiness of the field to ensure the board has adequate information to make a determination on the full opening of the field. Uh, so Chris is available to answer any questions the board may have. We also have with us, uh, Jesse Duff from Fairgram. Uh, Fairgram was the, uh, the project manager and designed and handled the design and then bidding process for us. So, uh, they're also available, uh, to answer questions, uh, if you have any of him.
Well, this is Peggy Cruz. Um, Jesse Duff, um, would you just tell me a little bit about the, um, the root system of the grass that's going to be permanently established in there? And then the temporary grass that's there is the, um, the one that is permanently there? Is it a very complex root system that needs to establish itself?
It's orange time.
Hi Peggy, um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a tougher root system. Uh, it's a ballpark mix is what we spec. Um, as far as the details of, of the root system, I, you know, I, I can't really speak intelligently on that. Um, you know, in the packet, like, uh, Drake said, is there, there was a breakdown of, of the seed, um, as far as the bluegrass. Um, but, uh, yeah, I really can't speak too intelligent on, on the root system itself. You know, the root system of a grass is, is related to how tall the grass is, uh, also, so.
Okay, well, I, I understand. I guess it probably just takes a little more time to establish itself, um, than the others and that usually comes with a more complex root system, so.
Yeah, it will, and, and the real reason why Cooling is recommending, uh, June 30th is, is really because of the overseed, since they came and overseeded some of the bear area, bear, uh, spots, that seed needs to germinate and that's where we need ground temperatures between the 68 and 86 before it even starts to germinate, let alone grow. Uh, what you're seeing out there is the, uh, grass seed that was, uh, seeded last year, which is the same mix as what was overseeded, uh, April 12th.
Okay, thanks Jesse. And then Kevin, I have a question for you. Uh, where will you do your outfield training then?
Chris was able to get us the Bible church right around the corner.
Okay.
So if we could do our infield training there for teams and if they wanted to do outfield, running any other drills that they wanted to do, they could go down to the Bible church and use that field that they have. They have a grass open space there.
Okay, thank you. That's what you had mentioned. I want to make sure that it was still the same. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hey Drake, it's Bert from the PD. Can I ask a question?
Uh, it's up to Roger, but go ahead.
Uh, and this is really for Chris and who's maybe on the Parks Committee. And the only reason I'm bringing this up now is because I just happened to see the permit for Fire Fest where at the end of July, 1st of August, they plan on using that for, uh, some bouncy houses and stuff. And I'm just curious, is the park going to be ready to go by then for that type of use? I believe it's July 31st and August 1st. And, and again, I'm just asking to stay ahead of it because if it is, that's fine. If it's not, um, somebody should probably let the fire department know.
Yeah, we, what, what Bert's referencing is we recently got in, uh, a permit request, a special event permit from, uh, the fire department for their Fire Fest. Um, I suppose, I, I guess, I'm not sure I can answer that question for you right now, Bert. Obviously, it has to get through, um, committee and board approval. Uh, so that's ultimately their decision. Um, I don't know, Jesse, after the, you know, Cooling says June 30th it's ready for play, does that mean it's? Do you think that mean, I would assume that means that it's ready for, for use. Um, would, would there be additional concerns with, uh, you know, bounce houses or, or, you know, other, other traffic not, maybe heavier traffic than a softball game would have?
I would say that, you know, it's, it's a little bit at your discretion, you know? I mean, it's, it's like any other grass field, you know? The, the longer, um, you have stuff on it and weight and, uh, you know, the, the more use, the harder it is to, to maintain. I mean, it is a, it is a, uh, what I would say is a good mix, but, you know, you can kill the grass still, um, just like you would, um, you know, any of your fields in the past. So I think, I think we, you just kind of have to be smart about it and, you know, and, and how much traffic and, and, and the bounce houses, how long they sit there and, um, you know, and, and, and kind of play by, by your and what you're seeing on the field. You know, the June 30th is the deadline that the contractor is saying, um, in order for him to, to, uh, warranty, uh, his, his grass seed. You know, if you get on it before then, um, then it's a hard time to make the contractor come back and say that, you know, the grass failed because of the seed that he applied or the methods that he applied it.
Yeah, so Chief, I think that would ultimately, I think that'll ultimately be a discussion among the committee and board and something they'll, they'll be considering is, is the grass for that. So, um, I think it's certainly something that'll come up in, in the discussion when that permit, uh, comes through.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Like I said, I just saw it and we're working with the, uh, fire department. I just clarification on some other issues as it relates to the alcohol and this and that. So I'll be sure to remind the fire chief too to check further, you know, on the approval of all that down the road. But that's the only reason why I ask. Thank you.
Uh, this is Chuck. This is Chuck.
Go ahead Chuck.
Um, I think we're getting away from the, uh, agenda item, uh, for the, uh, consideration and discussion of the opening of the Garner Park Infield here. And I think that's what we need to, uh, address tonight. And I guess as Chair of the Parks Committee, I would, well, I'll just, I'm going to, for sake of discussion, move that we, uh, uh, open the Garner Park Infield, um, as presented by, uh, the, the restrictions and, and conditions, uh, presented before us. Uh, but under Director Reer's comments, um, I would like to make sure that as part of that, that the, the, uh, grass outfield is, uh, roped off in some manner and that, uh, the entry is restricted. And I don't know, uh, well, that, I'm going to make the motion that we open it up and then as part of the discussion, I'll have some other comments.
This is Tammy, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to, si- since we do have, uh, conditions and restrictions in place, I am somewhat concerned about, um, non-supervised use of the field. In other words, general public saying, oh geez, they're playing on the field, so we can go out there and, and bang around. So I don't know if there should be any additional conditions set forth if someone wants to monitor this. Um, then, someone should monitor this. I know Chris is away a lot between school and his other coaching, so I don't know who's going to monitor the, the conditions that we do here. Um, but I think we need to set something in place.
Is it possible to put out any kind of signage? Um, not, I mean, not anything, just, um, outfield still closed? And then, uh, can we just keep up the caution tape? And then, Chris, is it possible to maybe even run a caution tape? Kind of through, through the, through the, you know, at the edge of the, out, the, or the edge of the infield just for a little while to get that?
I think Chris has already addressed that.
Yeah, I will, I mean, just so the whole board hears it. Uh, my initial thought was, you know, we're, we're just going to treat it like we did COVID and closing all down, down all the parks and treat it like when we just closed the, closed the whole field down two months ago because we had some people walking on the grass. And I think the community at large, at whole, is, is wanting a good park and is willing to follow the, the guidelines of saying, hey, stay off, allow the grass to establish. And I haven't seen a lot of foot traffic in the park since we put up signs and caution tape. So my plan was to add more caution tape and just update the signage. Just to say, hey, grass is still growing, please stay off. The park is temporarily closed for public use. It is only infield use for park and rec teams only, um, was my initial plan. So something similar to what we've done in the past to keep the general public off. I understand, you know, it's not 100% perfect, but I have found the community as a whole has been pretty receptive to the new field and wanted to, to make sure it's ready to go at the right time. So I think putting up tape and signs is probably the best way to go.
Yeah, I, I maybe didn't make that clear enough in my motion. I said as per Chris's, uh, recommendations, so I, I think he's already covered that. Um, so I, I think we're safe to go along with that. And, and, um, you know what? If, if there happens to be a lot of violations, then we'll just have to act on them. We, we have the, we have the, uh, ability and the power to shut things down if they don't work out.
I, I'm with, I'm with Chris. I think I have faith that the community will follow the guidelines. Just, um, you know, it might be a little confusing at first when you start to see people on it. You're going to get anxious and you're going to want to go play. But if we leave the signs and the tape in place, I think we'll probably be fine.
And on top of that, we could, we could do some, some PR with that too. We can get it out on the Facebook page. Um, I can email all the registrants in active to get the information out to the public. We could throw something in the paper. So we, besides signage, there's other ways, there's other avenues to get the information to the community.
I think it's pretty obvious. If we, uh, yeah, I think it's pretty obvious. See, if we, if we rope off the outfield, um, and put up just a little bit of additional signage, it's pretty obvious. So I, I don't foresee problems. Like I said, if they occur, um, we will have a, we will have a meeting and, um, close everything if need be. I don't, I don't think it's going to happen, but, um, it's not like, it's not like there's only one way to do this.
Okay, is there anybody? Is there anybody else that would like to speak otherwise, so? Uh, I guess not, so all in favor, opening Garner Park Infield, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
Thank you everybody.
You're welcome, Chris. Thank you.
All right, take care, guys.
Uh, Item B, consideration discussion, Resolution 2215, Amending the Parameters, Resolution Adopted April 6, 2022, Establishing Parameters for the Sale of Not to Exceed 1.65,000, 5,000 General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds Series 2022A With Respect to True Interest Costs. Drake?
Uh, the original true interest cost placed the limit on bids at 3.5%. Uh, due to rising interest rates, this could result, uh, in no bids. Uh, our financial advisor, uh, Ellers, reached out to me, uh, to let us know about this concern and, uh, recommended the, this amendment to the parameters resolution to 4.0%. Uh, they still expect it to be in the 3.2 to 3.5% range. However, they thought the greater flexibility, uh, was worth it to ensure that the bonds are sold and not have the board have to go through, uh, the entire process all over again. So, and, uh, administration recommends approval.
Uh, is this in any way encouraging, uh, holdouts for a higher rate? I'm not a financial expert, but, but I.
Uh, they don't believe so. Um, they, Ellers, it's a competitive bid, so they're submitting their, they're submitting the lowest, you know, the lowest bid that they think they can get to get them the ability to, to get, to purchase the bonds. Um, so it is still competitive. It's just with the, with the market conditions, uh, and the interest rates that are arising, um, weekly almost. Um, Ellers did not want us to be in a position where no one bid on it because, uh, the hard cap, the hard cap of 3.5 was no longer market competitive. Uh, and so they, that's why they reached out to me. But, uh, it, it's, it's still a competitive process and so we still anticipate receiving, uh, bidders' best offers.
My, uh, my feeling is to, well, the trust, trust of financial investors, my trust in financial investors is at a pretty low ebb. And I think raising that parameter, that, that amount to 4% might just encourage people to say, oh, hell, nobody's going to bid on it until we can get it up higher. Or lower, or, or whatever, uh, lower for us, higher for them. I don't know if that's really a great idea or not. What if we set a cap of 3.75?
Um.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
I imagine we, I imagine you could, you could. Uh, I'm trying to look through, look at the resolution.
Oh, just a minute, just a minute. Well, let me, let me back up. I guess whatever happens, we still have to approve it, right?
Uh, if it meets the parameters, then no, then it, uh, then based on the resolution that was passed the last time, it allows, um, it, myself or in my absence, the treasurer, uh, to sign the sale documents, uh, and so that the sale didn't have to occur on a Tuesday, uh, which can, which often are the busiest times to do sales, which can result in higher, higher, um, higher costs to the village. And so they, we, they've moved, we've moved towards the parameters resolution so that we can sell on non-board days. Uh, so the parameters is the board saying the, we don't want anything approved that doesn't coincide with these parameters.
I don't know Chuck, I, I understand your frustration. It's very, very frustrating to watch all these prices go up and it's very frustrating to not have enough of an understanding about how, like, if we allow this, if it won't, like you said, encourage them to go, well, if they'll accept that, we might as well bid that. Um, I get exactly what you're saying. I just, I understand also what, what Drake is saying too is, is that the volatility of the market is kind of pushing us to unfortunately make these kind of decisions. Um, it, it's a tough one, I agree. Um.
Hey Drake, this is Henry. Um, we're, we're proposing to raise it to four just to get more bids in there so that they're more competitive, hoping that it will still be 3.2 or 3.4. Is that their rationale?
Uh, correct, we're raising it to four, we're raising it to, yeah, the, the recommendation to raise it to four is to, um, reduce or eliminate the likelihood that no one, that we, we don't sell them. And then we have to go through the sale process again. So if, if we're, you know, completely out of line with market conditions and we, we don't, and, and nobody submitted a bid that is below that 3.5, that is below that 3.5%, the parameter, then we can't sell, we can't sell the bonds. We have to adopt a new resolution and go through the process again.
So it'd be significantly worse off if we didn't, correct?
It could be.
It would, it would delay, it, it, at the very minimum, it would, it would delay our ability to obtain funds for the project this summer.
This is Peggy. Um, my concern with all of this, and I understand your position, is that the Federal Reserve has already indicated that it's going to raise interest rates in 2022 to, you know, slow the purchase of these bonds. So it's going to be less favorable, I think, for bonds and it could possibly go even higher. So, um, you know, we're in this, we're in this where we have to borrow and I know that we're trapped in some ways, but I, I feel like Henry said that on the cautionary side, we could be looking at something even worse. Thanks.
Correct. If interest rates continue to rise and we, for whatever reason, weren't able to sell the bonds this go around, we could be facing higher interest rates the next time we go up for sale.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
So this is Tammy and I'll go ahead and make an emotion to, uh, do Resolution 2215, amending the parameters of the resolution adopted on April 6th.
This is Henry, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item Nine, President's Report, uh, consideration discussion return to in-person meetings and mass policy. I guess at this point in time, my feeling is the numbers are bouncing around again and I guess we should just stay the way we are for now. And I know Drake has reached out to Fuzzy's about some speakers. Have you heard anything on that?
Uh, he just got back to me today to tell me he's out of town and will be sending me some information next week.
Okay.
Drake, I have.
So I think it, go ahead.
This is Peggy. I, I was thinking of this today and I, uh, if we do go to, um, in-person meetings in the summer, a lot of us are gone at particular points and it has been very easy to be at different locales and be able to, you know, attend the meetings. Um, would you have that opportunity then for, uh, either citizens or village board members out of town to zoom in? Or are we just going to go, going to be just, uh, in-person meetings when we do make that choice?
Uh, hybrid, a hybrid, uh, model would be difficult, uh, for us to implement. Um, we, we would have to buy it, more additional equipment to really make it probably to the standard that the board and the, the public would, would like it to be at.
Okay, I just wondered. Thanks.
So I guess we'll just keep putting this. So I guess we'll just keep putting this on the agenda and if at some point we go back to in-person meetings, fine. Otherwise we'll just keep the, the way we're doing it. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, consideration discussion, 2022 committee appointment. Uh, I have one, I haven't filled yet on the tourism committee. I have talked to a party, but they haven't gotten back to me yet. So, uh, but everything else is full and for your guys' approval. So we need a motion to.
You need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion to approve, uh, the committee appointments, uh, with still a opening on the tourism committee yet.
Do you need volunteers for that committee or are you still working on it?
Uh, I'm still working on it, but it needs, it should be a business person.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, this, it's, it's under state statute. You have to have somebody from motel and business people and, and citizens besides, but.
Um, I'll make a motion to go ahead. Sorry.
I, I just want to clarify. Yeah, it's a, it's a commission, so that's why it's kind of under state statute, correct, Drake? Yeah. So if you want to make a motion. You want to make a motion, Tammy, or whoever, go ahead.
Yep. This is Tammy. I'll make a motion to accept the 2022 committee appointments.
I'm Michael Bell, second.
Okay, Michael, thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else from the board? Hearing none, we are adjourned.